Good evening and welcome to the November 1st, 2018 work session business meeting of the Putnam Valley Board of Education. Please join me in rising to salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. We have a short agenda this evening. We're going to get started, I guess, right into discussion on our facilities project. Dr. Loft.
So, I just want to quickly provide an update on our upcoming facilities project. As everyone, I hope everyone is aware, our vote is scheduled for December 4th from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the elementary school. I just wanted to quickly show, the easiest way to access the information is on our district webpage, so PVCSD.org, and then right on the main page you'll see a link for the Capitol Facilities Project. This is where we're keeping all of the information that's been shared, so from the original presentations that were shared during back-to-school nights and other community events, to our most recent, which is our Facilities Project FAQ document is available, videos from the board meeting, which include interactive presentations about the project are available, renderings for, draft renderings for possible projects are included, our five financial facts document is included, as well as some capital, I mean, some financial information as well. So, as we get information, or as we get questions asked by the community, we're collating that information, and any question we're getting numerous times, we're trying to add to our FAQ document. So, starting with a very simple question of why now, and information as to about why this is the right time for us to be considering this project, questions about how will it be completed for the amount of money which we're seeking, information about the fact that it can, the cost cannot escalate, that if we borrow 14.8, that is the money we have to spend, and it cannot become a $20 million project, some information about aid. There's been a couple different numbers out there regarding the amount of state aid we'll get back, and there's, both of those numbers are accurate, and there's a description below at terms of, one number is based upon the principal cost, and one number is based upon the total cost of the project, which includes interest. So, those are the two aid numbers. We talk about the fact that it's not as easy, we can't just simply take the debt that's falling off and roll it into our operating budget, that's not a possibility. We talk about the fact that this is an opportunity, and this is not something that we must do, and that there is an option for the money to go back to the tax rolls, and an estimate of approximately $20 a month would be saved for an average household in Putnam Valley. We talk a little bit about the, what would happen if the bond did not pass. We talk a little bit about the critical infrastructure needs, as well as the timeline of the project. The timeline also speaks to why we are going out for a vote in December, we're trying to maximize the time we have to get stated approval without missing a window for the work to begin in the summer of 20, of 2020, and that would allow a majority of the work to take place over the course of two summers, which would minimize any effect we, the construction would have on our students and our instruction. We talk a little bit about the Health and Wellness Center specifically, about how it is much more than an athletic space, but really an academic space that will be used from 8:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. We talk about the fact that we'll be increasing the number of classrooms in our middle school, which is scheduled nearly to a capacity right now, and we talk about changes at the middle school and how that affects our lunch program. So, as more questions come in, we'll continue to update this FAQ document. One of the most recent questions we got asked was from a Cortland resident whose students attend Putnam Valley schools, and there seemed to be a misunderstanding in whether or not they can vote for the bond, and as your students attend school in Putnam Valley, then you are a member of the Putnam Valley School District, even if you don't live in the town of Putnam Valley, and just like you can vote for this school budget, you would be able to vote for the bond as well. So, that's one of the next FAQ questions that we'll be adding to this document.
Now, the presentations, we'll continue to talk a little bit more about this as we move on. We have a couple more, two more meetings, I think, before the vote?
Correct. We're scheduled, I know, on November 15th, I should have mentioned, we have a Q&amp;A forum scheduled before the board meeting, so beginning at 6:00 p.m. here at the high school, there'll be a community forum available. I know we're scheduled to present at the town board meetings after Election Day, and any, anytime we have an opportunity to get together with a group of individuals, we've gone as far as meeting with individual persons in the evening, and anytime there is an interest out there, myself, Mr. Spittle, Ms. Figarilla, someone else on, someone else within the district is more than willing to come out and help answer questions, and our commitment is to be transparent and to make sure that voters are informed with accurate information. So, however many meetings we need to make that happen, we want to make sure that their correct information is out there.
Great.
Right, and I believe everybody knows that the information for the bond vote can be found on the website. I don't know if you went over that before I walked in, I'm sorry, but the video is not up yet, correct? It will be up-
Right.
-within, I think, like 10 days.
Yeah, next week, we expect, after sometime after Election Day, a video will be available for, on YouTube, and we can spread the link to that through social media and our website and through email as well.
Right, and a flyer will be going out to anyone, reaching out to as many people as we possibly can, trying to reach out to them in many different ways, so that everyone has an opportunity, because not everybody reaches out to get information in the same way.
Okay. Moving on to item two, I guess, discussion of the convention, the NSBA conventions, we don't have any students here yet. I don't know who wants to talk about that, Barbara and Jeremy?
Okay. So, I spent three days in New York City at the New York State School Boards Association Convention. It was really informative, although I didn't always agree with the presentations that I sat in on. I, I did get the sense from the presentations that, that Putnam Valley was in a really good place in terms of our, our education. I attended a couple of sessions each day. One was cultivating a diverse and culturally responsive workforce, which was really interesting because the presenter talked about that a lot of schools go on this academic journey, where they're, they do a book study, they have conferences, they read articles, to be culturally responsive. But, the presenter really wanted us to also go on an authentic journey, that where we really look at our policy and our advocacy and our instructional shifts to ensure that we're culturally responsible to our students and staff. I, I went to one on academic learning centers. The presenter said how difficult it was to make significant change, but he encouraged that we schedule opportunities for students to get small group and individual help throughout the day, that's what they did, and they found that it was very successful. We do that in so many ways in the presentations I've seen at board meetings and with the school, so I thought we were doing really well. The Commissioner of Education, Mary Ellen Elia, spoke about her four main goals for this year, which is to continue to improve the assessments, to develop next-gen standards, the APPR process needs to be improved, and mental health support. After she spoke, there were lots of questions about other things, most of which she responded by saying, "That's a really important issue, but I need to focus on these four main areas." And, because if I start jumping off and going to all these little tiny, smaller threads, it, it's really hard to see progress. I went to one by the Troy City Schools about small learning communities, enhanced middle school, and they talked a lot about what we've already done in middle school, making, going back to the model of pods, making sure that, that there are small communities for students that have, theirs had pod classrooms, an administrator and a guidance person for each pod, common space, flexible learning space, that kind of thing, so all the things that we've made those kind of shifts. Redefining schools through next-gen learning spaces was really interesting, but again, they talked about those learning relationships. You can have really good methodology, amazing tools, a great environment, but if you're not building those learning relationships, students are going to be left out. And the last day was the, the positions adopted by the New York State School Boards Association that we went over at the last meeting, they agreed with everything we did, they made, the resolutions were adopted. There was quite a bit of heated discussion about the limiting or reducing unauthorized access to guns in school, but it did pass overwhelmingly, and they did, the last one, which was not recommended, the number 19, was adopted, where the New York State School Boards Association is going to take leadership in raising awareness to understand the disproportionality in the educational workforce, but the responsibility is going to be on the New York State School Boards Association, which is a good thing. So, it was good.
Yeah, I echo much of what Ms. Palmer said. It was my first time attending, and I found it to be a great event. It was a great opportunity for networking and a great opportunity for reflection, and I think a lot of times where our own worst critics, in many of the sessions I attended, although the presenters did an excellent job, I found myself saying, "Oh yeah, we do that. Oh yeah, no, we do that." So, I attended sessions on things like culturally responsive schools, innovative classrooms, diversity in hiring practices, empowering all students in social, emotional health, and I think one of my takeaways from going to conferences is always I come back feeling a little more empowered and a little more assured that what we're doing here in Putnam Valley is right by students, and it's a nice way to sort of affirm all the hard work that happens here every day, so that's my quick update.
Next year it's in Rochester, if anybody wants to think about planning that trip.
Okay, thank you for that. And we move on to, I guess, curriculum.
You guys are getting tired of listening to me talk? So, just a quick update, mostly from a district perspective, we've been conducting or canvassing applications for our middle school, our vacancy for middle school assistant principal. We had, by the close of the posting, over 120 applicants, we screened, personally screened over 20 individuals, and we reached the point where we believe we have four highly qualified candidates that are scheduled to go before a larger committee that'll take place next week. They'll be both in interview portion, as well as a performance portion, where the individual will be asked to prepare and present a presentation for a committee, as well as a writing sample. So, we're very excited to have four highly qualified candidates move forward to the larger committee, and I believe any one of the four would be an excellent addition to Putnam Valley. The Innovative Classroom Academy met, teachers presented, took the lead and presented what they learned about learning spaces and homework. We discussed barriers to accomplishing our goals and solutions to overcome those barriers. I just want to point out, observations are well underway across all three buildings. It's actually one of the most exciting parts of the job, to get into classrooms for large periods of time, or for a chunk of time, and be able to watch, not just the teachers, but the students, and I've already witnessed some amazing things, and I always end up being impressed when I go out to conduct my observations. We have a superintendent's conference day coming up next week. Just a quick rundown of our agenda, there'll be some opening remarks, there'll be a Yale Ruler Session, which is facilitated by some teacher leaders. There's a civic engagement activity, which focuses on the idea of what is the American idea? There'll be time for vertical curriculum work, and then in the afternoon, there'll be time for building level meetings. We also had the fortunate privilege to participate, now that we're located at the elementary school, the elementary school does a Halloween parade, so the district office decided to get involved this year, and dressed up and had some decorations, and the students were very excited to walk up and down the ramp at the district office and to see all of us dressed in costumes as well. It was a lot of fun, there was a nice little break in the middle of the day. And just quick public service announcements, as many are aware, it's the High School Spirit Week, and elementary school parent conferences are underway as we speak. Thank you.
Dr. Loft, can you share more on the, on the discussion on the homework?
Sure. So, the book, the Shift This book that we read offers different perspectives in terms of homework. So, we did a fishbowl activity where individuals were inside of a circle, and there was both pro homework and con homework individuals, and the rest of the educators on the outside were feeding us questions, and we sort of had a debate back and forth in terms of if homework was good, if homework was bad, what's the right amount of homework, what's the purpose of homework, and I think we, it led to a good discussion among educators to say, what is the appropriate amount of homework, what is the goal of homework, and, and what do we hope it sort of accomplishes, or how it's viewed by both parents and students, and I spoke as a parent more so than an educator, and others spoke as educators in terms of what we think the value is or is not. So, we certainly did not come to any district-wide decisions, but I think we had a great discussion about finding ways to make sure that homework is productive, provides information to parents, but it doesn't become just a burden in time, and that it doesn't become busy work. So, more to come.
Okay, thank you. And, this is not a long wait for you this, this evening. PTA, PTSA?
Hi, I'm Christina Casey, I'm the course-
Can you turn it on? Can you get a turn on to?
Hi, I'm Christina Casey, the course- Funding Secretary for the Putnam Valley PTA. Our October membership drive is over, and we have a total of 316 members. We also had a friendly competition between the teachers and staff at both buildings of the elementary school and the middle school, and the elementary school teachers won. They will be treated to a breakfast from the PTA. Thank you to everyone who became a PTA member this year. Your support will help fund exciting programs and educational experiences for our students. On Friday, November 9th, we have picture retake day at both the elementary and the middle schools. Middle school grade-level pictures will also be taken on this day, so dress your best. Friday, November 9th, is also our PTA night at West Point. The Black Knights welcome PV families to a West Point hockey game as they host Sacred Heart. A portion of each ticket purchased will be donated back to the PTA. Tickets are $15 each, and parking is free. The elementary school book fair will run from Tuesday, November 13th to Friday, November 16th. The book fair will also be open during the gym show on Wednesday, November 14th in the evening, and we're looking for volunteers to help set up and help students purchase books. The elementary school is also selling custom Spirit Well, Spirit Ware through Spiritshop.com, and we have a promo code for $10 off your purchase. Flyers were sent out via email and can be found on our Facebook page. The Three For Me program is running at the elementary school on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., but you can also attend at other times, just let us know ahead of time. Three For Me encourages our members to volunteer three hours of their time over the course of the year to support our elementary school teachers with tasks such as copying and assembling projects. Coffees and snacks are provided for the volunteers. We're also still looking for a treasurer to join our executive board for the school year. As online shopping increases in preparation for the holiday season, please use our Amazon Smiles links and a Shutterfly and Tiny Prints link to support the PTA. A percentage of your, of your order is donated back to the PTA, and flyers with this information are on our email and Facebook and website. To volunteer for any of the events mentioned tonight, or to volunteer for upcoming events, please sign up through your PTA account at www.putnamvalleypta.org, or email us at info@putnamvalleypta.org, and like our Facebook page for more information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina, if people haven't joined, I know the membership drive is over, but-
Yes.
-can people still join, and how?
Yes, please. There is, you can either have a paper form, which I can provide to you or email to you, or the direct link is on our website right in the middle when you first log on to our website.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, still no students. So, I guess we'll move the public comment on any agenda items from the audience or the board.
I just wanted to acknowledge, I left this part out, I wanted to acknowledge our new location up at the library and the high school. You may notice there's books and other academic stuff around us-
We look very smart now.
-and not a cafeteria. So, I want to commend Mr. Spittle for his foresight in getting us up here and setting everything up and arranging it, and I must say that I am already enjoying the view of the beautiful windows, and as opposed to having them at my back. So, I hope this is our, our new location for good, so thank you.
Oh, and if anybody's watching and you haven't come because the chairs were awful, they're really nice, comfortable chairs, I sat 20 years on those hard metal chairs, now there's comfortable chairs, so you're welcome to come to a board meeting and be comfortable.
Speaking of acknowledging, I just wanted to acknowledge the students for having a very worthwhile competition as part of their Color Day. The Putnam Valley Food Pantry can always use help and support, and as part of their competition, they brought in various food items that now will be donated to the Putnam Valley Food Pantry, and I think it's just a wonderful thing and a wonderful way to have something very positive and, and supportive come out of a friendly competition. So, thank you to all the students of Putnam Valley High School.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. Part of the program where now I don't have to read, so-
Right.
-to number one.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Frank Travato to a probationary appointment as a school monitor at the high school, effective November 5th, 2018, with a minimum probationary period of eight weeks, December 31st, 2018, and a maximum of 52 weeks, November 5th, 2018, on step, step three of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments, is that date right?
Is that date right about 2019? I was wondering as I was reading.
As amended.
As amended.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Move on. Number two.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Diane Hasser, Hassett, a school bus driver from the district, effective October 26th, 2018, as per document number 74/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Resolved to approve and authorize the Superintendent of Schools to enter into a supplemental memorandum of agreement with the Putnam Valley Federation of Teachers regarding compensation for the CSE, CPSE chairperson as special education coordinator, as per document 7219 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to enter into a supplemental memorandum of agreement regarding certain student and teacher schedules with the PVFT, as per document number 73/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
For the community, what this, this particular agreement is talking about is that when we need, think we need to make a change in our schedules, the student, the teachers and the PVFT and the administrators will all work together. Any changes that we made presently will remain, even though we might not have followed all three groups working together, but in the future, all three groups will work together when we come up with some changes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the 2019-20 budget timeline for the May 2019 budget and Board of Education trustee vote, as per document number 76/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Is this going to be, now, once we approve, it'll be on the website, the schedule?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Whereas the heating system for the gymnasium, two ceiling-mounted heating and ventilation HVAC units at the Putnam Valley Elementary School has failed and requires immediate repairs in order for the gymnasium to be functional for the school district's programs during cold winter months, and whereas, upon review of the situation by the district's architect, KG plus D, it was determined to be necessary to undertake immediate repairs to the HVA system for the gymnasium to ensure the safety, health, and welfare of our students and staff at the Putnam Valley Elementary School, to allow for required physical education activities during the fall and winter, and to preserve the district's property, and whereas, the board is empowered to determine that the expense of these activities is an ordinary contingent expense, contingent expense within the means of paragraph 2023 of the New York State Education Law and 170-2 parentheses 1 of the regulations of the Commission of Education, and that the project constitutes an emergency within the meaning of paragraph 103 of the general municipal laws to allow for the immediate repair of the HVAC system at the gymnasium at the PVES without competitive bidding and with expedited consideration for approval by the State Education Department. Therefore, be resolved that the Board of Education hereby determines and declares that the cost of the repairs of the HVAC system units in the gymnasium at PVES include incidental costs and expenses, constitutes an ordinary contingent expense within the meaning of paragraph 2023 of the education law and 170-2 parentheses 1 of the regulations of the Commission of Education, and constitutes an emergency within the meaning of paragraph 103 of the general municipal laws, and hereby authorizes the expenditures of those funds necessary for such purpose, and be it further resolved that the board, the board hereby determines that the Putnam Valley Elementary School Gymnasium HVAC system repairs will not have a significant environmental impact, and declares this project a type-two action pursuant to paragraph 617.5 of the State Environmental Quality Review Act regulations, and no further action is required, and be it further resolved that the board hereby authorizes the Superintendent of Schools to make transfers between and within functional unit appropriations in the general fund in order to pay for the cost of this ordinary contingent expense.
Second.
Questions or comments?
So, I just want to add to that, that, as a comment, that if New York State, which we've already sent the information to from our architects, once they deem it, or hopefully they will deem it, an emergency based on what the architect's review was, will receive aid at 59%, so whatever the cost is, so whether they, they prove it as a true emergency or a local emergency, that will determine how we get the aid. We either get it in a lump sum next year, or we'll get it over the, a 15-year period, depending on which way, but either way, if they deem it an emergency, we will get the aid, and the good news is that we'll be able to tie it directly into our geothermal system that was, you know, installed over this past summer as part of the EPC project, and that will definitely save energy, even though we have to incur this expense as an emergency at the current time.
And what happens to the students' gym period while this repairs are being made?
definitely save energy, um, even though we have to incur this expense as an emergency at the current time.
And what happens to the students' gym period while this repairs are being made?
So, we've already begun to have conversations with them. We, for the short term, we can move them to the smaller gym, so gym classes could still be held. In the, in the short, short term, it's still warm enough outside, so they're coming up with, um, activities that they can do outside whenever possible. So, we're still obligated to make sure those gym classes take place, so that'll still happen. And we anticipate the work taking a week or two, um, for total for the work to be done, and we're hoping that maybe we can stage it, do one side of the gym at a time, and we'll certainly work with whoever is the company that ultimately performs the work to shorten that timeline as much as possible, but the classes will still continue either outdoors or in the small gym.
And what is the, the timeline? As far as, if everything goes as planned, um, when do they start?
So, first, our first goal would be, was this after this action now, is we would look to get three quotes to, for due diligence, to make sure that we have the appropriate vendor doing the work. Uh, we could do that in a couple of days, and then it's just a matter of lead time for how long it takes them to get the equipment. There are, we're aware that some have options to expedite that, so because of the nature of it, we may pay a little extra to expedite the equipment to, to shorten the lead time, which would, we could shorten it from eight weeks to four weeks. So, you're looking at a little over a month before the work can begin, and then two works, and two weeks for it to be completed.
And we move on to the consent, consent agenda.
Did we approve it?
You gotta vote on it.
Why would we do that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now the consent agenda.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda items two through eight as presented to the board at this meeting.
We're approving additions to the substitute tutor list. We're approving the winter coaches for boys and girls basketball, boy swimming, cheerleaders, wrestling, indoor track, and ice hockey. We're mending the appointment of the elementary school kids of character advisor. We're appointing a club advisor for the Future Business Leaders of America. We're approving a health and welfare contract for one of our students who attains a, a non-public school in the Halliday School District. We're mending a contract with Community Care's Companion, DBA Interim Health Care of New York, who is changing their name simply to Community Care's Companion in all our agreements. We're approving a budget transfer to help us purchase various things. So, we're getting a snow blower by taking money from upkeep of building and grounds. We're taking some money to, um, for the roof, to help the exhaust at the roof paying, and we're taking that from the employees, money that we have left in employees' pensions. We're moving funds to cover the costs of the, uh, International Baccalaureate Program, and we're taking that money from some teaching vending costs that we're saving.
All in favor?
Aye.
And any public comment on any topic? Anything from the board?
Well, I, I would say I, I attended the Putnam Valley Library, had a ghost stories night. Um, I, the Bennett family, Gail, Mike, and their son Jonathan, um, did, I think, most of the setup and arranging, including spooky music. Um, there were eight readers. It took us about two and a half hours, which was a really long time. By the end, the only people in the audience were the readers themselves, but, you know, they were, it was a great event, and hopefully that, um, people will start attending the things that the Putnam Valley Library is trying to do to bring the community in. It was, it was really nicely done. They had, the very first reader was a professional reader, which kind of like was intimidating to the rest of us. But, um, some of my favorite stories in, um, The Tell-Tale Heart by Edgar Allan Poe and The Open Window by Saki were, are, have always been two of my favorites. They were really well-read, um, and it was a really nice night. So, I'd like to thank the library for, you know, encouraging literacy and listening skills, which you really needed. It was, you had to kind of turn your head to not, you're, not to visualize it in your head and not, because it was nothing to see other than the reader, but it was really, it was really well-done, and I would encourage people to pay attention and, uh, to come out when the library's doing those kind of things.
Anything else?
Well, we have to say congratulations to the volleyball team, Putnam Valley High School, who had a great run and, uh, uh, they, uh, they're now out of the, the sectionals, but they, they, uh, won a match or two there, and, uh, it's great to see the, uh, two coaches are former students too. We have so much, many of that, some of our winter coaches that we're appointing are, are former, uh, athletes here, and, uh, it's just great to see. And they, they had a very good run and, uh, look for onward and upward from the volleyball team.
And I guess if we're mentioning volleyball, we had to mention football.
It's coming up.
That's, um, tomorrow.
Yes.
Is, uh, at sectional championships, right?
Yeah, at four-thirty at, uh, Mayepec High School.
Yeah. And it will cost you money to get in, just so you know. And it's not us or Mayepec charging, it's the section, just so people don't say, "Hey, I never knew that." And with that, we're looking for a resolution to convene an executive session for one matter of the employment history of one particular person and discussion of two matters of possible litigation. After the conclusion of the executive session, there will be continued business prior to the close of the meeting.
Second.
There, there will be?
There will be.
Okay, thank you.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody. So, the Board of Education just exited a, an executive session, and we are here to close the meeting officially. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Bye again.